Good evening. I want to welcome everyone out in the council chambers this evening. We are pleased to have here this evening the third city council county commissioner workshop. This indeed is a workshop, so this will be fairly informal. There's a good deal of information that is going to be presented this evening. I think there's certainly a high degree of excitement and anticipation, I being among those most excited and anticipated to see what the engineers have for us this evening. But I want to welcome you and also let you know that after the presentation this evening, at 7:00 up on the Scott County Cares website, the presentation is going to be fully available, as will be a survey, where we're going to begin collecting the feedback that is so desperately needed from across the community on this project live, so that your voice becomes very much so part of this process. So I just wanted, on behalf of the city council, I wanted to welcome you. I wanted to then hand the microphone to Chairman Beard, and then we'll pass it off to the engineers.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. It's good for us to be together again. I think this is our third workshop on this project. It is a significant project right in the heart of the county, and of course, in the heart of your city. So we're looking forward too to hear what kind of thinking, see if there's anything outside the box that Mr. Cromie's going to share with us. And with that, Mr. Mayor, we're ready to listen.
Mr. Cromie.
I assume red light is good?
Red light's good.
In this case? So, just to kind of set some expectations of what the purpose of tonight is, I'm going to step you through a couple of different parts, and then the two parts become the project that we're developing for 2019. Part one being the corridor visioning, as we look at the Highway 21 corridor, all the way from County Route 82 down to Franklin Trail, and how, what we do in the downtown area at 1321, 21 Main, how that fits in with the overall corridor. We have a lot of information that we've been producing and analyzing here over the last couple of months. I'm going to sum it down as best I can. We are not asking for your input tonight. We're not asking for decisions or direction tonight. Rather, we want to be here and inform you, as electorate here, where we've been and where we're going. My primary objective is for you to understand the project alternatives as we get to the end of the night. So certainly questions about, questions that help clarify what we're showing you are welcome. So real quickly, where we've been, as the mayor said, this is the third work session this year. We also have had a fair amount of public engagement. Had a corridor visioning group that has gotten together twice now this summer to talk about the corridor as a whole. We've had a very successful open house in June, and a number of pop-up meetings where we got out, brought the meetings out to the community at community events. And of course, the Speak Up Scott County Forum, where we've been gathering information and opinions and questions on the project goals, and how people are using the intersections. So real generally, the big takeaways that we've heard here is County Route 21 is a road to downtown, not just through downtown. I think that came out very quickly in the beginning, as carried through. Some of these items that we've captured here are rolled into our project goals, which we will review. Probably a big one that came out as we initiated the public involvement is there's a desire, or there's a readiness for change, that the congestion that there is reaching an unbearable standpoint, unacceptable standpoint, but also the uncertainty of what's going to be done to fix the congestion issue drives the need in the community being ready for change. And as you'll see here, there are alternatives to consider. Where are we going to be going here? This is basically the opening night for our Phase Two of the project, where we now are going to go get information and input, answer questions about the various alternatives. So we have a number of community engagement activities occurring, be it the EDA on Monday, the Rotary at next Wednesday. We have several pop-up meetings already scheduled here in September. We're getting that corridor visioning work group back together as well, to look at how now these alternatives fit with the greater corridor. As always, we will have a public open house, kind of a catch-all for people to come in, ask questions and get their questions answered. All of this is really building up to getting to the city council with a preferred alternative for the city council to consider in November. So with that, I'm going to ask Matty to review the project goals.
Hi, everyone. I'm Matty Peck. As Chris suggested or said, I'm going to discuss the project goals, and then some of that initial public input that we've been hearing in the project up to this point. So you have the project goals up here, and these were developed initially by our project management team, including city staff, county staff, consulting staff, MINDOT staff, and were further developed with our initial public engagement. So through those first pop-up meetings that we attended, through that first corridor visioning workshop that we held, we sort of further developed and further refined these goals to reflect more what we were hearing from the community as to what was important for this project, important to consider, and also some concerns that they had that are important to keep at the forefront of our mind. So to quickly go through the project goals, they include preserving and enriching the character of downtown Prior Lake, enhancing the mobility on County Highway 21, so relieving that congestion that Chris talked about, maintaining, enhancing local roadway systems, providing comprehensive non-motorized transportation network, providing infrastructure improvements that are compatible with the natural and human environment, developing a financially responsible plan, as well as safely accommodating all the users on the roadway. So after sort of landing on those project goals, we really started to collect public input on those goals specifically. So that was our first survey that we put out on Speak Up Scott County, was covering, how do you feel about these goals, and sort of how would you prioritize these goals? We asked about each goal, is this very important, somewhat important, not important? And you see here, we had sort of four that came out as being marked as very important, so 56, a little more than half, called out as enhancing that mobility and safely accommodating all users as being a top priority from our goals, as well as about 50% called out, developing a financially responsible plan, and preserving and enriching the character of downtown Prior Lake. In our second survey, where we asked more input about how people are using the corridor, and who's using the corridor, we asked specifically, if you could only pick one priority, which would you choose? And we can see here that we've got moving vehicles through the intersection more quickly and efficiently, that's sort of the highest response, as being that top priority. And before we sort of asked the question of who's taking this survey, who are these people responding, we tried to cover that also in the survey. Is that something we're hearing a lot at our community engagement events, that people say, well, people are just driving through, all the people are driving through, the people responding in the survey are coming through, or they're the people downtown? So we just wanted to address that directly in our survey, and asked, if you do travel through this 1321 intersection, why are you coming through the area? And you can see here, we have quite a few responses that say, that they use it to access those downtown businesses in Prior Lake, and also a good amount that are using it to access the, are using 21 as a regional connector. Another question that comes up a lot, or sort of a topic that comes up a lot, is who we're getting input from, and I think that this is where Scott County, or the Speak Up Forum has come in really handy, because we've been talking to a lot of people who live and work downtown at our face-to-face meetings, but the largest number of responses that we've been getting on the survey are coming from people who live in Prior Lake, but they live outside of downtown. So the people who may be coming in to use those businesses, or using those sort of regional connections, but not necessarily living in the downtown. Another thing I want to make sure to note, and I'm going to roll into a plug for the forum, is that I've listed on all of these slides how many people have responded. Our first survey, we had 30 people respond with what goals they prioritize. I would not jump to say that that is a statistically significant result, but I also want to jump to say that we're not done collecting input. So if anybody hasn't gone and completed the surveys, and wants to get their voice heard and their opinion heard on these topics, it's important to go and take the surveys and answer those questions. And even if you have already been there and already filled out the survey, it's good to go back and check, because there's a lot, all the comments are open to the public. So you can go through and sort of see a different perspective, and see a different viewpoint, maybe, on the project. So now we'll move, I'll pass it back over to Chris, and we'll talk about the corridor.
So I'm going to talk through kind of part one of the planning process that we went through, and we engaged a group of handpicked community leaders to help guide some of this. So we looked at the County Route 21 corridor, all the way from County Route 82 over to Franklin Trail, realizing that the land uses, the character of the corridor changes considerably outside of this area. You really feel like you've come to Prior Lake when you're in this corridor. So that's where we focused our efforts into, what do we want this corridor to achieve? What is the message to the driver? How is this corridor going to function long-term? The location and how intersections are spaced is a big part of that. We identified a couple of different approaches to establishing primary and secondary intersections. And I should describe real quickly the difference. Primary intersections are part of the overall roadway system. They connect collector streets to a minor arterial. They're meant to serve a broader area, land area. Primary intersections are locations that we want to try to maintain full access, so that people can cross County Route 21 at primary intersections and make all the movements necessary. So how we do that is we utilize either a through-stop condition, an always-stop condition, roundabout, or traffic signal. This is the way that we manage primary intersections and vehicles and pedestrians through them. Secondary intersections are intersections that are more necessary for perhaps individual or smaller property access. They may be necessary because of, a group of properties may be landlocked, say by hypothetically a lake, and there's no other, no other streets serving that area. So secondary intersections are still very important, but because of the spacing necessary to maintain safe and efficient flow, we treat them differently from a primary intersection. A secondary intersection can operate full access with a through-stop condition, as long as it does so safely and efficiently. When we have problems with large delays, or we have, problems arise with crashes at secondary intersections, we go a different route, and we look at perhaps a reduced conflict intersection, like a right-in, right-out, or a restricted intersection that precludes crossing movements or left turns out, known as a three-quarter access. So as it relates to the downtown area and beyond, we did look at two different concepts. Did look at two different concepts for primary intersections. This concept is generally consistent with the County Route 21 corridor study that was completed, that identified primary intersections, of course, at Highway 13 and 21, and established the need for the Arcadia Avenue intersection. Went a little bit further to look at the need for primary intersections further to the west. Some of our findings are that we expect traffic to continue to grow on 21, on this portion of 21, and we do expect that many of those intersections are going to start seeing high delays during peak hours. So we need to start managing the intersections as primary or secondary intersections, so that the neighborhoods that are adjacent there can continue to be served. The second concept that we looked at is more consistent with conditions that are out there today, with Main Avenue and Duluth Avenue serving a kind of a dual-purpose primary intersection, and then a secondary intersection at Arcadia. We also had a couple of alternatives further to the west, that are more or less independent from what we do downtown, but there is some relation in how the primary intersections serve the various neighborhoods. So we'll take a look at this real quickly. So Concept A, the red arrows that you show here, that we show here, coming out of the primary intersections, generally just show that the street network that is present, or could be present, to serve the various neighborhoods. West Avenue, for example, is a pretty reasonable north-south collector street that connects many of the smaller dead-end streets, or cul-de-sac streets in those neighborhoods. And then, of course, the Arcadia Avenue intersection illustrates the intent of that intersection is to connect the downtown areas from Duluth down to Pleasant. So as we look at downtown under Concept A, it's important that we consider how those intersections serve access into downtown from each direction. So coming from the north, you see under Concept A, with Arcadia Avenue being the primary intersection, the primary access from the north, you have several options to really access, getting access into downtown. Numerous opportunities both on the north side and south side of downtown. And then, as we look at different concepts here shortly, you'll see that there are other areas that we will be looking at, a secondary or alternate access to further enhance access to a particular part of downtown. From the south, you can see that access into downtown becomes a little more difficult, and it's clear why there was resistance to this concept a number of years ago. That your first access point, if you're coming from the south, is really you've got to go through downtown to Arcadia Avenue. Some of the secondary locations, where there are right turns from a secondary access point, are there, so the north side is accessed pretty well. And then, of course, needing alternatives to provide additional access to the south side at either Pleasant or Main Avenue. From the east, it's similar to, as from the south, but the primary intersection at Arcadia serves in many directions as the first access point, with secondary access by right-hand turns, and then alternate access that we'll be looking at on how to provide a couple of ways into downtown. From the west, this works pretty well. First access point that you encounter is Arcadia, and you can get to both sides of downtown with secondary access points via right-hand turns. In addition to access into downtown, we looked at how vehicles and pedestrians would get across town. So certainly, with a secondary access at Main, we would expect some traffic to utilize Highway 13 to, between Dakota and Pleasant Street, to access one side or the other. And certainly at Arcadia, you'd have two primary crossing points for motorists. Under this concept, there would be multiple opportunities for pedestrian crossings across downtown. We can provide pedestrian crossings at secondary intersections, and in some cases, better pedestrian crossings at secondary intersections with restricted access, because you have fewer conflicts with vehicles. And then as part of the work that we're doing with the corridor, is we are trying to identify ways to incorporate non-motorized travel, in particularly the Scott West Regional Trail that follows the south side of 21, and providing some connectivity then to downtown, and then ultimately Lakefront Park. It'll get more interesting here, real quick. So Concept B, this is the new concept that we're looking at for access. We're looking at primary intersections at Main and Duluth, and then how different alternatives you can access into downtown. So under Concept B, access from the north is very similar. You get that left turn onto Main, because you have a primary intersection at Main. And with secondary, again, downtown is very permeable if you're coming from the north. You have that Main Avenue intersection, that signal. You know that you're in downtown as you come through. From the south, you can see you have better access into downtown at the primary intersections, and potential for secondary access at the Arcadia intersection. So for those who may criticize the work that's been done at Arcadia, we will, under this concept, we will still utilize that infrastructure the best that we can, so the decisions in the past won't be wasted. From the east, similarly, access using Main, downtown becomes, remains very permeable with secondary access at Arcadia. From the west, still works pretty well. So going through this process, I think the project team recognized the change that was being proposed, and it emphasizes the need to potentially look at other alternatives as a whole. And then crossing Highway 21, similarly, would be at the two primary intersections. And again, multiple ways for pedestrians to cross Highway 21. So from a corridor standpoint, there are really two concepts to consider. The first being the primary intersection on 21 being at Arcadia, the second being the primary intersections being at Duluth and Main Avenue. That's part one. We'll move on to part two. I'm going to have Jake walk through what we're looking at solely at the Highway 13 and 21 intersection for traffic control, because we do have alternatives there as well. I just want to emphasize that, as this map illustrates, the 2113 intersection is a very important intersection for county-wide travel. There are very few east-west connections across, as there are just a few north-south with 2717. So maintaining mobility, safety in that intersection is clearly an equal priority to providing access into downtown.
Hi, I'm Jake Bondar with Bolton &amp; Bank. So yeah, we'll be discussing the intersection control alternatives that were explored at 1321, kind of wading into the corridor concepts that we'll be reviewing here. And the two primary alternatives that we looked at were a traffic signal and a roundabout at the intersection. So with the addition of, I guess with looking at both of these traffic controls, there was an understanding that we do have a capacity issue at this intersection, where lanes would need to be added if it does remain a traffic signal, or if a new traffic, or a new traffic control alternative was introduced, we'd have to ensure that enough lanes are provided to move traffic efficiently through the intersection. So the two concepts that were reviewed were, first off, a traffic signal. In addition to what's currently out there today, we would be providing exclusive eastbound and westbound left and right turn lanes. So part of the existing, part of the issue with the existing intersection is the signal timing out there is prohibited by the need to provide individual movement, or independent movements to eastbound and westbound traffic because of the lack of turn lanes. And by doing that, it takes time away that can be allocated to 13 and also 21 mainline movements. So the presence in providing exclusive left and right turn lanes, it opens up a lot of options for us. We're also looking at trunk highway 13, providing dual northbound and southbound left turn lanes. This will also provide a little bit of extra capacity, just to help move vehicles through the intersection. And as discussed, the traffic signal timing is, would be one of the primary improvements at this intersection, and in providing those eastbound and westbound left turn lanes, eliminating that split phasing, it does open up a lot more time. As we talk about the roundabout concept as being a second alternative, because of the traffic volumes that we do expect out there, I guess that are out there currently, and that we do expect in the future, it would require a multi-lane roundabout. So something similar to 5060 or CASA 50, CASA 60 Dakota County, if you guys have ever traveled through that intersection, that'd be a good one to go off of. With the single lane of approach, northbound and southbound, north and south, the intersection on trunk highway 13, we would provide an addition, an expansion from a single lane to two lanes entering the roundabout, near Pleasant Avenue going, or Pleasant Street going north, and near Dakota going south. So it would be one lane coming in, expanding out to two through the roundabout, and then lessening back down to one on the other side. On CASA 21, we would be providing a continuous two lanes in both directions, maintaining that existing section that we have out there. So I'm going to kind of break the discussion of these two intersection alternatives into two options, or I guess two different segments, one being traffic operations, and the other one being safety. So beginning with traffic operations, as just kind of a starting point, currently the intersection operates at a level service D during the AM, which is that between 40 and 54 seconds of delay per vehicle, or seconds per vehicle entering the intersection. So it's a level service D in the AM, and a level service F in the PM, with about 90 seconds of delay. So by introducing the traffic signal alternative with the lanes that we had discussed on the previous slide, we would expect an intersection level service D during both AM and PM peak hours. So from the very beginning, we'd be seeing acceptable traffic operations, and an improvement in moving vehicles through the intersection. As we get to 20, or, and then if we look at the roundabout, under that same scenario being 2017, we would expect an intersection level service A. So the roundabout would very efficiently move traffic through the intersection, both of them being acceptable, but in looking at this, the efficiencies that would be provided by the roundabout are expected to be greater than the traffic signal. As we look further out, and the year As we look further out in the year 2040, we do start to see some delays beginning to build again with the traffic signal. But the intersection level service E is still far greater than anything we'd expect in the no-build scenario. It is near acceptable, and I guess it is acceptable, and we would only expect it to exceed level service E or greater for about two to three hours a day. So just during those peak conditions, we would expect it to climb into that range, but it would still expect it to be less delay than what you see currently during the PM peak. As we move into the roundabout discussion in 2040, we would expect in the AM, a level service D for 25 to 34 seconds of delay. So we do again, expect very efficient operations with the roundabout during the, or, and then during both the AM and the PM peak hour. So the PM would be a level service B, a little bit lower. And overall, as the intersection as a whole, we would expect there to be no hours of the day that would operate at level service E or worse. So in looking at the intersection as a whole, we also looked at the operations and performance of individual movements. As Chris mentioned, our conversation has been looking at providing effective movements to downtown, I guess in addition to through downtown. So we separated it from both local movements and regional movements. So yeah, the vehicles that are traveling just through the intersection, going to work and whatnot, and those traveling to downtown. And we found that overall, the roundabout does provide more efficient operations for both those local and regional trips. From a safety perspective, splitting into vehicles and pedestrians, beginning with vehicles, what we typically expect for a traffic signal is, so 0.7 crashes per million entering vehicles. To put that in more, I guess, digestible terms, that boils down to about seven crashes per year, given the traffic volumes that you guys have out here. If a roundabout were introduced at this location, we'd expect those volumes to increase, or the crashes to increase to about 1.4 crashes per million entering vehicles, which would be about 14 crashes per year. So we'd expect somewhere in the range of twice as many crashes, given the complexity of the multi-lane roundabout and just the kind of the uncertainty as you proceed through the intersection. With that being said, the fatal and serious injury crashes expected at the intersection. So we have a rate of 0.97 per 100 million entering vehicles for a traffic signal, which boils down to one fatal or serious injury crash probably every five to 10 years. If we translate that to, if we look at the roundabout, that would be more so looking at one fatal or serious injury crash every 10 to 20 years. So those crashes are very few and far between throughout the county as a whole and throughout the state as a whole. But one of the benefits that we'd see is just an overall reduction in injury crashes with the roundabout. One of the main concerns that we have with a traffic signal is the right angle crash that's introduced with it. So if you have a vehicle traveling northbound and one traveling eastbound, if a vehicle were to run the stoplight and hit a vehicle traveling eastbound, that's a high-impact crash, and that's one that we often see severe crashes with. What a roundabout does is it forces all vehicles traveling through the intersection to slow down to a speed of about 20 miles an hour is a typical design speed. And it removes that conflict, that right-angle conflict of two vehicles just hitting each other in that nature. It's mostly merging crashes and side swipe crashes. So while there would be more crashes, likely twice as many crashes, we'd expect to be about half as many injury crashes with the application of a roundabout. From a pedestrian standpoint, the driver compliance for, or stopping for a pedestrian within a crosswalk is very high at a traffic signal. The red light comes up for a vehicle to stop, and then the walk symbol comes up for the pedestrian and they walk across the intersection. So we typically say that's near 100%. In a roundabout, it's a little different situation. There aren't lights necessarily controlling the vehicles entering the intersection, and it's not as night and day, I guess, when someone needs to stop for a pedestrian. So a study that was completed by University of Minnesota showed that, on average, the compliance rate's about 45%. So about half that of a traffic signal. So it is much lower than what we'd expect at a signal, but the wait times at a signal for pedestrian crossing would be higher. So with the signal, the current signal timing at 1321, it's about 170 seconds to get through an entire cycle. So if you were to go out there and push the button to cross the road, you may have to wait, you'd have to wait an extended period of time, typically 60 to 90 seconds in order to cross the roadway. With a roundabout, while the compliance is a little bit lower for a pedestrian or for a vehicle stopping, you do typically get to enter the intersection quicker. So we'd expect somewhere in the range of a 10-second wait time. So while it's a little more uncertain whether a vehicle approaching is gonna stop, you have to be a little more aware of your surroundings, we do expect it to be less of a wait time for pedestrians crossing the intersection. So just as a summary, the two different traffic control alternatives that we did review was a traffic signal and a multi-lane roundabout. From our findings from both an operations and a safety standpoint, both seem to be viable options as we move forward into the discussion with the corridor.
Thank you, Jake. So that's part two of this puzzle to put together alternatives for a project. Clearly, I think you're starting to see this isn't easy when you start having to pick safety over mobility, injuries over total number of crashes at the intersection as a whole. So what are the alternatives here that we're looking at? There are four of them magically. Two part-one concepts paired with two part-two concepts leads us to four concepts for that 2019 project. We've prepared this, you know, looking at the range of performance measures. As I get to the alternatives here, some terminology we should clear up when I start talking about alternatives. This was a pretty big task of ours to try to figure out what to call these things. Generally, it follows the corridor concept A and the intersection control one or two. A or B. So A1, that includes a primary intersection at Arcadia with a traffic signal at Highway 13. A2 includes the primary intersection at Arcadia with a roundabout at Highway 13. Likewise, B2 is a primary intersection at Main Avenue with a traffic signal at Highway 13. And B2 is the Main Avenue with the roundabout at Highway 13. So let's take a look at these. I'll introduce them first, and then I'll come back to each of them with an overall summary of how they perform against our goals. There we go. That was not intentional. So the A1 alternative, this is consistent with the corridor study and the recommendation from 2005. It includes a traffic signal at Arcadia and a traffic signal at Highway 13. It includes a secondary intersection at Pleasant with that northbound left turn lane. The addition on it is an enhanced offset pedestrian crossing at Main Avenue. Maybe I should ask the question, everybody got their bearings straight where north is up? Got it? A2, this is a primary intersection again at Arcadia with a roundabout at Arcadia as well as at a roundabout on Highway 13. And then mixed in there are three-quarter accesses at Duluth and Main. The three-quarter accesses are meant to provide, accommodate the crossing movement at Main that would be restricted by a median by utilizing the roundabouts on either end. The roundabouts are very conducive to U-turn, or what would be a U-turn at a traditional signalized intersection. There, I should have mentioned this, there are four primary alternatives that we're looking at. There are variations to these. One of the variations to this one could be a traffic signal at Arcadia, could function. It would be a cost-saving measure because of the infrastructure that is there today, but would be at the cost of facilitating some of those U-turns as efficiently. B1, this is the Main Avenue primary intersection controlled by a traffic signal along with a traffic signal at Highway 13. The key to make this work is a coordinated traffic signal between the two, where they would have to be tied, the phase on Main and 21 would have to be tied to the phase at 13 and 21. This option includes a roundabout at Duluth Avenue as another primary intersection and to address some of the safety issues that are there today. That too could be a signal, it'd be independent of the two signals at Main and Highway 13. And then what we do at Arcadia, there are a couple of alternatives we have providing left turns there to help alleviate some of the pressure on the traffic signal at Main Avenue itself. I see a lot of head nodding, so there must be some general understanding. And then B2, this also is a primary intersection at Main Avenue. It includes a total of three roundabouts at each of the primary intersections, Duluth, Main, and Highway 13. And again, there are some alternatives in what we can do at Arcadia to provide secondary access into and out of downtown for both pedestrians and motorists. We do have some concern with this concept because of the closely spaced roundabouts that, while not an average condition or what we really would expect on a regular basis, a vehicle in the Main Avenue roundabout, either making a left-hand turn or coming through, could become the controlling factor for that intersection as well as the Highway 1321 intersection. If one roundabout backs up into another, all four legs in each of the intersections back up. This is a concern that we have as practitioners. It's not a substantiated expectation that that's gonna happen, say, every peak hour starting in year 10. As we model this, we model this as working. This may have an alternative where it was suggested in the community that perhaps there are peak hour restrictions where certain movements are precluded from happening at certain times of day, i.e. the crossing at Main. So those are the four primary alternatives that we're looking at. I think when we added up, did we ever totally add up the variations? We were at 12 at one point. You know, moving this left-hand turn to a different location. And that's likely, you know, likely to dwindle down here as we narrow things down and make things work. But each of these alternatives were evaluated based on the goals that Matty reviewed earlier and measures of effectiveness on each of those goals themselves. So goals of the corridor character, non-motorized network, the vehicle and pedestrian safety, corridor mobility, local roadways, the cost of the improvements, and just overall feasibility with fit in the environment. I have various notes on the findings. I'm gonna summarize what I think are the key takeaways on each of these options. So we'll start back to A1. This is the traffic signal at Arcadia and a traffic signal at Highway 13. This option, some of the key benefits of this option, this one has the lowest property impacts when compared to other alternatives. Some of the alternatives that you saw there had more than 20 different properties being impacted. This one, we were estimating about 10 properties could be impacted with this design. It also is, it provides the best pedestrian crossing performance on 21 because you have two traffic signals, one at Highway 13, one at Arcadia, where a pedestrian can choose to utilize that traffic control device to cross. It also includes an enhanced offset crossing at Main Avenue that would have a traffic control device there activated by the pedestrian. That is showing some good promise throughout the state for safety and mobility. This also ranks highest in the driver and pedestrian safety aspect because of the high yield rates that we would expect at the signalized intersections and at the Main Avenue crossing. Some of the key challenges, as I pointed out earlier, this one does have fewer downtown access points, particularly from the west, that this one only has the one access point coming from the west before it becomes very circuitous to access downtown. This one also has less efficient traffic operations overall on the corridor because of the higher delay that we would expect at traffic signals. As Jake pointed out, at Highway 13 and 21, we would still expect a fair amount of delay at the intersection controlled by the traffic signals. And lastly, it's certainly not least, this one did come in as the highest project cost. And I'll get into that in a little bit more detail here in a later slide. Overall, what I would, what you can expect as community leaders here, as the public, comparing and contrasting this with other alternatives, this is your stop-and-go alternative on 21. When the green lights are up, traffic is going to move, and they're gonna move at, or I'll say, near the posted speed limits through the corridor. When the lights are red, traffic will back up. The other thing, as I tried to kind of wrap my arms around what's different with this one, is how it creates kind of the vehicle access is really on the perimeters of downtown. And the Main Avenue 21 intersection becomes very pedestrian-oriented. That you get into and out of downtown from Arcadia, Main, some of the other perimeter locations, pedestrian activity is focused at Main Avenue, you've separated those out. So let's take a look at that pedestrian crossing in a little bit more detail because it's an important feature to this option. So I mentioned this crossing is an offset crossing. So I mentioned this crossing is an offset crossing. So the illustration on the right illustrates the crossing. And what that does for the pedestrian is it makes the decision to cross a roadway much simpler because now they have to assess traffic coming from one direction in just the two lanes that are coming at them. They can choose a gap in that eastbound traffic if you're moving from south to north. You can choose a gap in the eastbound traffic, cross safely to the median. They now have a different decision to make as they walk along the median to choose a gap in the westbound traffic. Separating these two decision points does yield a safer crossing. In addition to, we have this positioned on the approaching lanes, the intersection, you also don't have to worry about the right-hand turn vehicle coming behind you and pulling out as they're looking left, looking for the same gap in traffic as the pedestrian is to cross. The illustrations to the left are meant to illustrate what this is like for the driver coming down Highway 21. So the driver is aware that there is an activity occurring there. This isn't hit the gas and move through. You can see we have some vertical elements to it. We have a pedestrian-actuated overhead traffic control device, warning device there. So you will know when you're approaching this part of downtown. The pedestrian on Main, you can see there's a vertical element to it there as well to see that you can't simply see across like you do today and feel like you can simply run across. There would be some structure there to prevent the law-abiding pedestrian from simply running across. It'll channel them in. There would be barriers on either side, so you'd enter the median at a particular location, walk along it, and then cross at the other opening. We've identified this type of pedestrian treatment here because this is where we have known pedestrian crossings. And through our normal traffic study, the average weekday, the pedestrian traffic generally isn't that high, less than 20 pedestrians in any given hour, which is a pretty light pedestrian crossing, particularly for a downtown area. We also have data from when the farmer's market's in session, and that is not light. We had more than 200 pedestrians crossing the morning, in one hour, the morning of the farmer's market. So there is a pedestrian demand, albeit for special events, but this is a downtown area, and special events should be expected in a downtown area. Any questions yet on the concepts before I get into the cost of this concept?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cromie, on the roundabouts, or I'm sorry, on this slide you had here, B1, B2, I noticed the left turn lanes on the eastbound 21 to the north 13 move. Can you picture that? Both of those lanes are short. And one of the things we had discussed in a previous workshop, either one of these, was that the, part of the thing that was needed was the amount of traffic moving east on 21 that was turning north on 13, particularly in the morning, needed a longer, or needed some more staging area for that left turn move. If we do any of these, I noticed that seems to be a bit shorter. Are you going to get into the impacts of what that means, or will you be considering that for some future presentation? On both the B1 and the A1, I noticed that's the case.
I'll answer your question, but I should have clarified. Any questions on A1?
Okay.
I don't want to get into jumping between the options too much, but I do want to make sure that it's understood.
Well, on A1, it's the same thing. And the A1 slide, is that the one you wanted to ask questions on?
Yes.
Short turn lane, northbound 13.
So the turn lane lengths that we've identified are what we believe are going to be necessary to handle the traffic that will be there in the future. So we'll call it adequate turn lane length. We're not substandard. We're not, you know, standard. It's what's necessary based on the band expected. Under the B1 option, since you brought it up, to make that work, that requires a larger footprint width of 21 in order to get the turn lane length necessary for eastbound 21 to northbound 13, side by side with a westbound left turn lane to south on Main. Those two left turn lanes would be side by side, pushing the width of the roadway wider.
Now, I won't have to ask my B1 question when you get to that. We're good, thanks.
Any other A1 questions from the board or council? We'll get into the cost of A1. I mentioned this one appears to be our most expensive of the four alternatives. And it's most expensive, not necessarily because of what we're doing on Highway 13-21, it's what we need to do to make it work. First and foremost, consistent with the corridor plan, we've included the $1.3 million for the Arcadia Avenue intersection down to Pleasant Street because we feel under this option, it's most, that connection is most necessary for the circulation within downtown. And that's consistent with the previous recommendations. And that $1.3 million includes the property acquisition as well as the construction of that one-block street extension. Probably more notably, that Pleasant Street connection, that's an expensive fix, or that's an expensive extension. We have preliminary results from soil borings that indicate that the poor soils that are there, the unstable soils that are there, are down 40 to 50 feet below the existing roadway. So the fix on Highway 13 alone is looking at about a $1.1 to $1.2 million fix just to keep the existing Highway 13 from continuing to sink. For the Pleasant Street connection, that northbound left-hand turn, similarly, the options are limited. In there, it would be a little bit different approach where we would need to do some pile driving there to establish a stable base in order to build, in order to build a surface in which we could build a roadway. That is estimated preliminarily at $2.5 million before we do any roadway construction. So a couple of those things lead this one to be a more expensive option than some of the other ones that you'll see. And not to sound wishy-washy on the cost of that Pleasant Street connection, we have just two pieces of information of soil borings that we were able to obtain within the highway right-of-way. If the Pleasant Street connection is desired to move forward, we would recommend getting into, onto private property, getting permission to do that, and get some additional drilling. But the, all indications on the information we do have is the depth of those wetland facilities is down 50 feet below the existing roadway, 30 feet below the existing wetland surface. This A1, before we completely throw this one out because of cost, there are some alternatives to this Pleasant Street connection. One alternative would be to facilitate that northbound, or that access to the south part of downtown from the south with a left turn on 21 at Main. So that, there are options that can make this a more palatable from a cost perspective.
Mr. Cromie, so just in contemplating this A1, and so if we left the Pleasant Street just right in, right out as it is at this very moment, we could almost, we could knock $3.7 million off of here? No, actually, the 13 correction needs to happen anyhow, doesn't it?
Correct.
Where it goes through the old slough there?
Yep. The 13 correction will need to happen.
Okay, so that's kind of, that $1.2 million should be in, all I want to ask about B1 too. I'll let you get to those ones.
It does vary a bit. Based on the potential need for widening in that area.
Okay.
It gets more expensive, the wider the corridor becomes.
It seems to me while we're tearing up the turf, we might as well fix that mess on 13 while it's there, but just an observation.
So I'll move on to the A2 option. To remind everyone, this is a primary intersection at Arcadia with a roundabout at Highway 13 and a roundabout at Arcadia. Some of the key benefits here for this one, this too has more minimal property impacts. Generally, roundabouts have a bigger right-of-way footprint at the intersection and a narrower corridor leading up to the intersection when compared to traffic signals. And that's true in this case as well. Because much of the property is already acquired at Arcadia, a roundabout can fit in that location. From a traffic operation standpoint, this one moves traffic very efficiently, very low delays caused by the intersections themselves because the conflicts are being worked out within the intersection. It's utilizing the gaps in traffic by the various directions quite well. This option also, in my opinion, best accommodates the local and regional trips. I shouldn't even say that, not in my opinion. It does, based on the operational analysis of the 13-21 intersection. What is attractive to this alternative is the permeability that it creates with downtown. Yes, we restrict access at Main Avenue, but that crossing movement can be made by a right-hand turn, a U-turn at your nearest roundabout, either at 13 or Arcadia, and that permeability is there. It puts less strain on the local street system than the A1 alternative does. So at Main Avenue, westbound is right in, right out.
Commissioner Wolf, if you would, hit your microphone for those at home.
I'm sorry. So is that a right-in, right-out only at Main?
It's a right-in, right-out for westbound traffic. It's a right-in, right-out and a left turn to Main for eastbound traffic.
Mr. Cromie, if I could ask, on this, if you're coming east on 21, you've got access to Main Street going north. I notice if you're going west on 21, you do not have access to Main Street going south. Any thoughts on that, if you could include that or not?
So your question is, is it coming from the east, access to the north part of downtown versus the south part of downtown?
If you're heading, my question is, if you're heading west on Conner Road 21, this doesn't allow access to the south part of Main Street. You can't go south. Is that possible?
It does provide access via the Pleasant and Highway 13 intersection that's there today. So at the 13-21 intersection, you would go three-quarters of the way around the roundabout and make a right-hand turn at Pleasant Street.
As currently configured as well, you'd have the U-turn option through the roundabout at Arcadia as well to come back on it.
Correct.
Again, your microphone, please, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. Roundabout there on 13-21, and this next one, would you, I don't know if I saw another where there was a roundabout at Duluth, would you?
Under this option, we have a three-quarter intersection at Duluth.
Oh, you do?
Where we would accommodate right-hand turns and a westbound left-hand turn. Similarly, the Arcadia roundabout would facilitate the northbound Duluth left by making a right-hand turn and making the U-turn through the roundabout itself. So this ties those intersections together and provides the circulation in downtown through the roundabout corridor on Conner Road 21. Couple of the drawbacks that I would identify on this, as Jake mentioned, the high number of crashes that we would expect because of the full multilane at Highway 13-21. So there may be more crashes occurring there, but from a safety standpoint, you'd less, be much less likely to be injured in a crash in this corridor. Another key challenge that we have as a project team is this alternative is considerably different than the alternative that we proposed to the Met Council and received federal funding for. So I would be amiss to not inform you that that federal funding could be reduced. With this option, we would certainly need to go through a scope change with them to try to confirm the federal funding. And then pedestrian safety, and again, building off of what Jake said, with the lower yield rates at pedestrian crossings at roundabouts, be a little bit more concerned about pedestrian safety in a multilane roundabout corridor. From what you can expect, you know, I mentioned the A1 concept, that's your stop-and-go option, a higher variation in speeds. This is quite the opposite. With roundabouts on either side designed to move traffic through those intersections at 15 to 20 miles per hour, you would expect to have lower overall travel speeds through downtown because of the controlling factor that the roundabouts provide. And I already mentioned this too, this option would result in less burden or less demand on some of the local streets for downtown circulation, namely Colorado Street and Dakota Street, some of the areas where we heard concerns were with making the Arcadia Avenue as a primary intersection. So again, this concept would have an enhanced pedestrian crossing at Main Avenue, again, similar to A1. It would focus vehicle access on the perimeters of downtown with the core area of Main Avenue where most of your business activity is, be focused on pedestrian. We could do a similar thing. We wouldn't be able to do an offset crossing here, but we could provide a pedestrian-activated warning device, overhead warning device, that pedestrian pushes a button, alerts drivers that there's a pedestrian there committed to crossing the roadway. This option, you can see, is considerably lower priced than the first option we looked at. More roadway cost because we'd be building two primary intersections versus the one, rebuilding some of the Arcadia Avenue intersection. Little bit narrower footprint on Highway 13 because we don't have all the turn lanes coming up too, so we're less likely to have to do the widening or incur additional cost for widening of Highway 13 through that soil correction area. cost for widening of Highway 13 through that soil correction area. And then a little bit higher cost we would expect in property acquisition. Shall I move on, or are there questions about A2?
Councilmember Thompson.
What's going on at Duluth?
Yeah, because under this corridor concept, Duluth is a secondary intersection, so it would be a, a reduced access intersection. The northbound left-hand turn to go westbound on 21 would be removed, and it would be facilitated by, by a U-turn at the Arcadia Avenue intersection. Coming from the east would be the same. You'd have the, a dedicated left-hand turn to the intersection. Same with west, you'd be able to make the, the right-hand turn in and out of Duluth.
Ms. Schell.
Question on the, the pedestrian safety at the roundabout. Is it possible to improve the pedestrian function there with some of those enhanced mechanisms as well by giving drivers warnings that people are getting ready to enter?
Absolutely.
Does it make cost sense? I don't know what the pedestrian movements are opposed to.
Yeah, absolutely, there are, there are alternatives, there are measures that we could take to improve the pedestrian crossing at roundabouts.
Councilman, or Commissioner Ulrich.
Yeah, I have a question on the, the process with the TAB on this Met Council with the project. If this needs to be a scope change and potentially rescored, it's not a question of losing some money, it's a question of losing all the money, isn't it?
It, it could be all the money, or it could be a, a reduced portion of it.
Because I worry that this is so different that it would, they wouldn't just say, "We're going to give you less because of the project scope," but I think this might be rescored. And I don't know how much with the, above the next project we were, it's, it's strictly a point system, and if it is rescored, then we would draw, it could drop below the next project and lose all that funding. So in a sense, wouldn't it make this one of the more expensive projects if we lost all our federal funding?
It could become more, more expensive to, to the county and city, yes.
Okay. Just want to clarify.
Councilmember McGuire.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Cromie, it seems to me that the 7.3 is a bit misleading. You should almost add in the 2.5 for the Pleasant Avenue. I mean, going up and using the roundabout and taking a left turn at Arcadia is really a, I think we would still need the northbound Pleasant Avenue access.
You, you certainly could have it, but one of the, the benefits of the roundabout corridor and having roundabouts on, on either end is the ability to facilitate that circulation with less burden on that, that local street.
The northbound left is provided here, and since we no longer have, yeah. I interrupt. With the concept that's provided here, so the Pleasant Street or the Pleasant connection is provided with the signal alternative, and we do need to lower that connection down to swoop up because of the turn lane requirements at the 1321 intersection for that northbound left turn movement. With the roundabout, those turn lanes are removed, and we're only providing two lanes into the roundabout, so that allows us to keep that 13 at Pleasant intersection at the same spot it currently is today. So that movement is still, that northbound left onto Pleasant is still provided, just at a much cheaper price because we don't need to do all the soil corrections.
I guess a comment I'd like to make as well relative to the federal funding, and I'm going to look here at Lisa Fries. Certainly when we submitted to, for that funding, there was no knowledge of the condition of those soils, so, and what the cost would be for remediation under 13 and that three-quarter access. So before, I think we bemoaned the loss of federal funds for a given design, the cost of actually implementing what was in that original plan has gone up significantly based on the need to remediate those soils. Would that be a, a correct assessment as I'm looking here at Lisa Fries?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners and Councilmembers, that is correct assumption that that cost was not included in the original application. There was a risk factor that was in there, though, that would account for a portion of that. The, the challenge that we're going to have with a new concept is exactly as Commissioner Ulrich suggested, is that they will rescore it with a cost increase. They look at the percentage increase before they cha-change their award.
Shall we move on? Concept B1, the, the Main Avenue primary intersection, this is the one with the traffic signal at both Main Avenue and at Highway 13. That's spaced approximately 400 feet apart, and because of that close proximity, we would need to tie those two signals together so that traffic can flow through both intersections on 21 and clear the, clear the intersection. This option, from some key benefits, this option does provide the most downtown access points or the potential for the most downtown access points, providing left turns in at Arcadia as well as at Main, crossing at Main can work, can work quite, quite well for, for movements to and from the north part and south part of, of downtown. The managed traffic movements simply means that we control it by using traffic signals that are, certainly have computer controls. We put the parameters in which, how that, those two traffic signals work. When you compare a roundabout alternative, we don't control how traffic moves through roundabouts. We do with a, with a, a traffic signal and the, the two coordinated movements here. This, this option does provide, does come in at, at one of the lower costs, and we'll get into that. You'll see it's not by a lot, but it, it is a, a lower-cost option, and again, it's primarily because we're now providing the full access at Main instead of mitigating an, an access restriction at Main with the Pleasant Street connection. Overall, this, this one compares to A1 from a traffic operations standpoint. This is going to be your stop-and-go option. When the, when the red light's up, people are going to be stopped. When it's green, they're going to be on the gas, traveling at or near the posted speed through, through downtown. We do, we do expect considerable delay at these signalized intersections. I should point out on this graphic, there is a drawback, a considerable drawback to think about for Main Avenue. The cars that you illustrate, that we have illustrated on there, that's what we expect in the, in an average afternoon of 10 to 12 vehicles waiting for that green light on Main Avenue to get, to get across 21. So you should expect to have traffic stacked into downtown in order for those signal systems to operate efficiently. And it's really in hierarchy of that signal system. We know, we know that MinDOT places a priority on Highway 13 movement. We've been living with that for, for years out here. The next priority is going to be Conner Road 21. Main Avenue is going to be the lower priority. And to get these two closely spaced intersections, signals to operate for 21, it's going to require some pretty substantial delays in queuing on Main Avenue. This option, too, presents the potential for the highest crash severity with, with two signalized intersections, close, closely spaced, vehicles crossing one another at right angles and at, and with highly variable speed differentials, traveling someplace between, you know, 35 and zero, higher than that on, on 13 itself. So again, as I compare and contrast, what, what can you expect on this one? Again, this is, this is your stop-and-go option, high variability of speeds through the corridor and through downtown, and the, and the vehicles stacked on Main Avenue through the, that afternoon peak period in order to keep traffic moving. That has the potential to affect how parked vehicles get, how people get in and out of park, parking spots. It really does create some congestion for you in downtown. Comparing and contrasting to the other alternatives where we've, where we separate out the vehicle, access to the perimeters of downtown, this one keeps the, really integrates the vehicle and pedestrian conflicts in your downtown. It puts a lot of pressure on Main Avenue itself to provide not just access to businesses, but mobility in and out of downtown for, for vehicles, and then crossing movements at Main Avenue at a signalized intersection where there are a number of different conflicts to deal with. Mentioned this one is the lower, lowest-cost one, but not, not by much. It's 7.2 million as compared to a 7.3 million. It's really apples and apples. And again, it's for the, the roadway construction itself is a little bit higher than some of the other alternatives, but the soil corrections not getting into that Pleasant Street connection and providing the, the access and mobility in that small area along 21 focuses those costs in. This one, too, I should point out, we do, we do not include the Arcadia extension because of the mobility provided at Duluth and the, the roundabout at Duluth being the, the right intersection control there. I should have mentioned this earlier. If we looked at just the Duluth Avenue intersection, say, everything was solved or there was no problem at 1321, and we have this crash problem at, at Duluth, a roundabout really is the, is the right solution there in a, in an isolated fashion. The alternatives that you see here where it's three-quarter, when we talk about signal, that's more from a, a corridor perspective of how to, how, how to solve the problems overall in the corridor. I'm getting there.
Chairman Beard, Mr. Cromie, on this B1, I'm sorry, I told you I asked my B1 questions, but since you brought it up, these cost estimates, do they include the roundabout at Duluth as part of the solution?
These do include the roundabout at Duluth.
Good thing.
Any other B1 questions? All right. So, so B2, this is a, this is a similar approach with the combination of roundabouts and three-quarter accesses to facilitate the downtown circulation within the, the 21 corridor, only it's flipped, where we have three roundabouts or the two primary intersections at Duluth and Main with three-quarters at Arcadia compared to A2, which was one roundabout at Arcadia, two three-quarters at Main and, and Duluth. So this one, from a traffic operations standpoint, works very efficiently like A2. It does provide the most downtown access points because we're utilizing Main Avenue in addition to the, the investment that was made in Arcadia for access. So, so those are some similarities to other, some similar benefits that other options Because of the mobility at the, at the 1321 intersection, this best accommodates both local and regional trips, again, within the, the highway corridor itself. Some key challenges and some key differences here is this one certainly has more property impacts. I mentioned the, the about 10 property impacts before. This one is more than 20 different properties would likely be impacted with this. So certainly a concern from a acquisition standpoint. We've already talked through some of the, the high crash numbers expected with the multilane roundabout and the pedestrian yielding concerns. This one, too, mentioned earlier, our concern for the, the highest potential for intersection blockage. For trying to utilize Main Avenue as a, as a, as a primary intersection, doing so with two roundabouts is not the best way to do that. Likewise, an option that, that we did remove from further consideration is a traffic signal at Main Avenue with a roundabout at Highway 13. Because we know that, that, that there will be queues that back up at times, and if we're not controlling that traffic signal in a fashion, it's going to back into the roundabout at 1321 and really shut down the regional system as a whole. So that's something that we, that we wouldn't be, wouldn't consider, is a roundabout at Highway 13 and a signal at, at Main. So again, like the A2 option, this, this option, we would expect less variability in travel speeds through downtown, lower than posted speed limits as traffic is, is slowed to 15 to 20 miles per hour to proceed through the, the roundabouts through here. And likewise, to, to A2, it's less burden overall on the, on the local streets, Colorado, the need for the extension down to, of Arcadia down to Pleasant, and then some of the concerns we heard about on Dakota Avenue as well. So this option comes in very close to the other options from a, from a cost standpoint. The fact that we have three options that are within $150,000 of one another is pretty amazing. Three of the four are all very comparable in cost. This one does reflect the, the higher property acquisition or potential for property acquisition. So I already mentioned that, you know, there are a number of variations to these, but from a corridor standpoint, access standpoint, and a traffic control standpoint, these are the four primary alternatives that we'll be considering as we continue to get public input, and more specifically, public input on particular alternatives, what people like, what they don't like, what they can't live with, what they can't live without. I would expect some variations to these, and I think I told the city administrator a couple of months ago that when we get to the end here in November, it's likely it's, it's going to be some variation or combination of, of all of these. There were a few alternatives that were suggested that, that, that are no longer being supported or considered. A couple, I mentioned the, the, the signal at Main with the roundabout at Highway 13. That, that we just can't get to work. We can't get it to function. A number of, of alternatives were suggested with, that included bridges, bridges for traffic, bridges for pedestrians. The bridges for traffic itself, we're not considering a bridge, say, to take a movement out of the 1321 intersection or bring Main Avenue over 21. Quite honestly, that type of approach is overkill for the type of traffic conflicts that we're, that we're trying to resolve. Traffic isn't so heavy that you go up to that order of magnitude of an improvement to, to make it work. For pedestrians, I know that there's been suggestions for pedestrian bridges or, or underpasses. Those are some things that we can still consider, whether that's across 21, across Highway 13. And it gets at, you know, how do we better improve some of these concepts, recognizing the additional costs that come with a structure such as a bridge or- the additional costs that come with a structure such as a bridge or a tunnel. So as I mentioned, these are the four alternatives. Couple very direct questions I have for the board and the council is, are there questions that you have relative to understand these concepts? I realize these are very small. The left-hand side of the screen is cut off. It's a little bit hard to see, but if there are specific questions you have that furthers your understanding for the basis of these alternatives, I would take that. And what other information do you need from the project team to help you make an informed decision here as we get later into the year, targeting now at a November timeframe?
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you. I have what I think is a couple of basic questions. The three-quarter access from 13 to Pleasant, is that included in all concepts?
It is not included in B1.
Okay. The Arcadia extension to Pleasant, which concepts include that?
It is included in A1 only.
A1 and?
A1 only.
A1 only. Thank you. And then the Duluth roundabout is included in all except? No, it's?
It's included in both of the B concepts.
Both Bs.
The B concept is where Duluth remains a primary intersection.
That's all I had.
Councilmember Burkhart.
If I can ask, and perhaps it's inappropriate, but in my short tenure on the council, I've learned a key skill is to ask the expert. Your group being the experts right now on this, as you presented them tonight, do you have a ranking of these yourself?
We do not have them ranked. I think what you will find as you digest this more, as you compare each of these alternatives to individual project goals, some of these alternatives are achieving the goals better or worse than others. So it really becomes, it really becomes what goals become most important. The alternatives that we've presented here, I think, are considered all acceptable, that the range of conditions that they achieve could be acceptable. It's just how do they achieve different goals, better or worse? So the project team itself does not have a preferred alternative. That's the intent of first informing the electorate and getting public input on the ranking or the prioritization of the project goals.
Councilmember Brayden, and then Chairman Beard.
I heard you say that Duluth, if it was separated out on its own, a roundabout would be the best to accomplish that particular intersection. I guess as we look and we see that area starting to develop commercially, is it, in your opinion, that, you know, Duluth roundabout should be an option that we should be considering maybe as part of all of the alternatives? That's my first question. And then my second question is, where would you recommend these pedestrian crossings as it pertains to concept B2 and A2?
So the answer to your first question is, in an isolated condition with just the movements through the intersection of Duluth Avenue, the roundabout appears to be the right solution there. Because of the close spacing of the intersections with Arcadia, you can't hone in on one solution there without knowing what you do at the next intersection. I don't think that I would recommend a roundabout at Duluth and a traffic signal at Arcadia because of the same interaction that those queues could have within the intersection. And then I'm going to ask you to clarify your second question about pedestrian crossing.
Sure. Administrator Shelton had suggested maybe using the pedestrian crossing lights past the roundabouts. And as you look at the concepts laid before us, you know, specifically, are you thinking that we would have these type of pedestrian crossing lights at Main as it looks at B2? And then also, as it pertains to A2, are you thinking we would have those at Main Avenue as well or Arcadia? Or can you give us a little bit more information?
So we would want to put advanced pedestrian crossing warning devices where the pedestrian demand is, where there's more likelihood that they're going to be used and that drivers can expect it. So under A1 and A2, that's why we would be proposing them at Main Avenue because we know that there's pedestrian crossings there today. I think we've concluded that doesn't matter what we do, pedestrians are going to cross at Main. The demand is going to be there. So we want to try to accommodate them the best that we can. Under some of the roundabout questions, I think a candidate crossing for more advanced either warning device or potential underpass is the south side of 21 as you cross Highway 13. Being that that is designated as the Scott West Regional Trail, we would expect more pedestrian bicycle traffic on the south side of that intersection. Certainly those things are not expensive, are expensive, so we're not going to add structures everywhere, but where it would demand. The other risk that you have is if you overdo it with traffic control devices, it all becomes eye wash to the driver. And they don't even realize that there's a flashing light because there's another one over there and another one over there. We don't want to overwhelm drivers to the point where they become, the traffic control devices become ineffective.
Chairman Beard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cromie, just a couple of random thoughts. The trail one just popped into my head. It wasn't on my notes I wanted to ask you about, but when we rebuilt, or we built 21, we put underpasses on a major east-west trail just north of County Road 16 while we had the place, while we were digging out a lot of muck and getting down to good soil. We put the trail under the highway right there, just a thought. Because this is a major east-west Scott West trail here. Just a random thought to consider between now and November or at some point in the future. Two things, as I look at these maps, I notice none of them include just outright closing Main Avenue. Engineering decision or is that a reaction to our public comments?
I think it's a realization that we're trying to get the corridor to fit within the context of the land uses that are there. So no, I don't know that we ever considered removing Main altogether from the 21 corridor.
Follow-on question to that, the pedestrian crossings at roundabouts. I've seen roundabouts from my perspective for a few years. Between now and November, can you give us some comfort should we choose roundabouts as a solution? That especially during rush hour with a lot of movements and people looking over their shoulder, that pedestrian crossings in roundabouts are actually safer, as safe as we think they are? I'm thinking we probably have some practical experience in New Prague, excuse me, Freudian Slip. I'm looking at this, I'm flashbacking to New Prague where you have like three in a row, bing bang boom, and then a traffic signal. Just, I'm asking, I guess, for further data on that, whether they're as safe as we think they are and as, especially with multilane traffic in a multilane roundabout. Color me just a little skeptical that pedestrians are going to not be taking their, taking a run at it, sort of like Frogger, to cross those things. Third observation, 101, we lifted 101 out of the floodplain out of Shakopee into Chan Assen. Put a big roundabout on the north end to connect with County Road 61 and the new 101 coming down over the bluff. That has become a favorite backdoor for a lot of people crossing the river. We knew it would be. There's a free right, when you're northbound, there's a free right on the Flying Cloud Drive, which in the morning works marvelously. In the evening, coming down the hill, not so much. When you have the same people trying to get back into town, I've seen traffic back up past Lyons Tap trying to negotiate a multilane roundabout to do a 270-degree turn, basically, to get to the bridge to get back into Shakopee. Again, just an observation on heavy car counts. I don't know how those car counts relate to this. That might be a tidbit of information we'd want to ponder as, and I know your staff is already asking you that and thinking about that.
And I can say that we did evaluate whether or not an exclusive or channelized right-hand turn would be necessary here, and we determined it's not. That the multilane roundabout has the capacity with the conflicts that we're dealing with to deal with it all within the roundabout itself. Typically, you pull those right-hand turns out and you got too many conflict points at that one spot.
Well, I don't have any questions. Actually Chairman Beard made comment on the one area I had, which is Jake made comment on efficiency of roundabouts for vehicle flow in the study, I believe, out of the University of Minnesota. I'd like to understand the pedestrian safety that goes along with roundabouts, to the degree with which they've been studied and we understand what's going on there. But I see where we are time-wise. I don't know what you have left for slides. But as we ponder or evaluate these things, again, the objectives that we have for the corridor, each one of the alternatives, you held them up against permeability of Main Street, vehicular flow. Again, Dave, I don't, Chris, excuse me. I don't know if you have them in your slides.
I've been called worse.
Yeah, there's high praise all the way around. Mr. Cromie. But providing to council and commissioners and all in the council chambers, what are those priorities and objectives through which we should hold ourselves as we begin to digest roundabout versus signal versus left turn, right turn? Could you either draw us back to a couple of slides that would cause us to reflect back on those objectives that we have for our corridor here? Or is that where you're going to be at conclusion?
How about if I conclude the presentation and go back and leave that up to have some discussion afterwards?
That would be, thank you. And Mr. Shelton, please.
Just one other question before we move on to the slide. On A2, was the roundabout out of Duluth because it was felt it wasn't necessary because of the roundabout at Arcadia? Or was it left out because it would be a feed or conflict somehow with the roundabout at Arcadia?
It was primarily left out of A2 because Duluth Avenue would be a secondary intersection. So we would try to provide all the access within the primary intersections and then the circulation to and from those. We did look at alternatives on how to try to tie Duluth and Arcadia together in a oblong roundabout, and we just, we couldn't get it to fit. But what's proposed here really facilitates all those movements, the same with the three-quarter left turn to Duluth, coming out with the right-hand turn, you can make a U-turn quite well. It facilitates the same movements in a more compact footprint.
City Manager Wels.
Just a point of clarification. Do I understand that any option that incorporates a roundabout jeopardizes the federal funding?
I think, I think that going from a signalized intersection to a roundabout would warrant a review of the scope at the Met Council. Next steps. The mayor already mentioned, we are going to get this presentation information out on our website and start seeking input as soon as we possibly can. I know the survey questions on each of these alternatives and how they compare, how any one individual ranks them relative to the project goals and some of the things we're trying to achieve should be going out in about 10 minutes. And we'll get this information up on movingforward2113.com just as soon as we can. I had an earlier slide that laid out where we're going to be in the future. I just want to call attention to the October 10 public open house is scheduled. That's really going to be a cornerstone to some of the public input that we're seeking here, starting tomorrow, I guess, starting tonight. Starting tonight and on through the end of October. As we're seeking public input, there's still a lot of coordination and evaluation that city, state, county, and consultant staff needs to work through, including addressing some of the questions we heard here tonight. We've had some involvement at MINDOT. We have not had enough MINDOT involvement at this point. So that's going to continue as well. But what we would like to do is to narrow this down to a preferred alternative where at that point in November, you ask me what the staff's priority or preferred alternative is, we'll be ready for that in November. And that's when we would initiate the municipal consent process. And that would then initiate the county's ability to start purchasing property for the improvement. Real quickly, because I know that there's been questions about municipal consent and what does that mean? In the state of Minnesota, there is a municipal consent law that requires MINDOT or the road authority to receive a resolution from the city council when they alter access, increase or reduce traffic capacity, or buy permanent right-of-way within that community. In this case, we do expect that we will be altering access and we do expect to be acquiring permanent right-of-way. The traffic capacity, what that means is we're not expanding a roadway from two to four lanes. We are adding turn lanes and we're adding capacity to the intersection, but it's not the intent of the municipal consent law to add turn lanes justifying the traffic capacity increase. So this process, we would initiate this when we feel like we have a preferred alternative, something that MINDOT provides, some assurances that they're not going to change it, they're on board with what's being proposed. The process that occurs is a formal letter is submitted to the city from the road authority. In this case, it would be Scott County requesting municipal consent. It would include a good faith cost estimate as to what the city's costs would be, and it would illustrate the right-of-way access changes that are being proposed. At the point that the official request comes in, the city has a requirement to hold a public hearing on the particular project within 60 days and then act upon a resolution within 90 days of the public hearing. So it's necessary that we do this, not just because the law requires it, but because for us to move forward with a commitment from all the agencies as to what is going to be built, what we're buying right-of-way for. We don't want to be making major changes to the what when we're down the road of already purchased property. We got plans out on the street and contractors ready to go. So that's the municipal consent process in a nutshell. Again, for city council members, we can talk in more detail about that when the time comes. I should add, this is a choice on the city's behalf. If the staff approved or staff recommendation proceeds and the city council approves a resolution adopting that layout, the project moves forward. If there are still some issues that we need to work out, a couple of things could happen. MINDOT or Scott County could try to meet the changes that are being requested by the city, try to resolve any remaining issues so that a clean approval can be provided by the city. There is an appeals process that is used on rare occasions when the road authority simply has to move the project forward and they can't come to a resolution with the city. That app... That appeals process is spelled out, it's a three-person board. City adopts one person, the road authority adopts another, and then you agree to the third person, they make the decision. They hear both sides and then make a decision. Lastly, if municipal consent isn't granted, the project could be either modified so that it's not required, or the project could be stopped altogether. So maybe that wasn't quite municipal consent in a nutshell, but I know that there have been some questions being asked about that process and I wanted to cover that. That is the end of my presentation. I want to thank you for your time. Two hours is a long time. This is the scratch in the surface of the information that we have. But again, the primary objective here was to develop an understanding of what alternatives we're moving forward, moving forward with and continuing to evaluate and receive public input. All this information is going to be on our movingforward13-21.com website that you can access as elected officials, the public can access that as well. And I encourage you to do so. We will keep that information up to date.
If I could just add on to this, and for all, when you do access the Moving Forward 1321 site, there's going to be a fresh survey awaiting you as well, looking for your input. So as you see here on the slide, we want to hear from you. Mr. Cromie, if you could, again, the priorities for our corridor, just to bring them up, just to orient us towards the lens through which we're going to want to evaluate these alternatives to make sure that as we move towards a municipal consent decision, the priorities through which we are weighing in are clearly understood and discussed. But I'd also, and then I'd like to hand it over to Chairman Beard here. I want to thank the engineering team. I mean, I'm looking to my right Kate Minor, Lisa Fries, Larry Poplar, see Matt here with us. I see many Bolton and Mink consultant engineers, I see county engineers. This has been a ton of work, a ton of meetings and a good deal of communication. The one thing I've heard time and time again is, we've never seen it this way before. We've never done it this way before. It's the first time, I believe, there have been three joint meetings on a project between county commissioners and council. And I want to thank my fellow commissioners for coming here to Prior Lake, for, again, weighing in on these very important decisions and we're doing this together. So again, my thanks to the engineering team for what we've seen this evening and my thanks to my fellow officials here for all of your efforts. And with that, Mike, any comments, closing comments you might have?
Thank you for pushing the red button for me. Think I've never done this before. No, we're glad to be part of this, this presentation and as we can, this consideration as we develop. I know we've been over this ground, or people prior to us have done this before. It's our turn. It's our turn to step up, take a fresh look, see what's changed, see what has developed in the engineering world and some of the data that we need to consider, and we're glad to do that with you. So we appreciate being here and again, thanks for the good presentation and for considering our request for a little more data, Mr. Cromie and your team. And we'll look forward to the open house on October 10.
Tremendous. Thank you so much.